Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 25th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation on the ground indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to the roll call members. Madam Cook, your role, please.
Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Sandra Jasanowski.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Mayor.
John Copeland.
Here.
Sierra Messengers.
Excuse me.
Absent, yep.
Robert Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our old business. First item up here is ordinance 24-33. This is amending the general terms, conditions for the electric service. This is on second reading. Jeff Jacob.
Good evening, council, mayor. Thank you for your time this evening. I don't want to rehash. We went through this in detail last meeting. In essence, this is a ordinance amending, recommending a change to basically our contract that we have with our customers. And the moniker of the utility in the mayor's office is to encourage development, to pay for development. What we've done in this ordinance is redefine what our relationship is with property owners and developers on who's responsible for the infrastructure costs. We have shifted the infrastructure cost for the onsite work to a property owner or developer, and then the offsite cost is fully on the utility with some carve-out issues there. And this has been, you know, the previous ordinance had been somewhat of a no-growth or slow-growth model, and we believe that this has moved more in line with, consistent with other electric utilities and what they do, and will put us into a little better footing. Our hope is that it will save money for our current ratepayers. That's just a brief summary. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Jeff tonight for the council? Okay, Rob, I'll have you read the ordinance on second reading again.
Thank you, mayor, council. Ordinance 2024-33 again is an ordinance that amends the general terms and conditions of the electric service. This council finds that the general terms and conditions of the electric service as adopted by ordinance 2015-09 are amended consistent with the provisions set forth in Exhibit A. Any portion of the ordinance that's in conflict with the provision of this is superseded. This amendment to the general terms and conditions, subject to Section 4 below, shall apply to projects that have not received a construction permit approval from the city of Lebanon, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption and as required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Any public comment concerning ordinance 2024-33? Any further council discussion? Is there a motion? You have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second from Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? That is approved. All right, that concludes what I have for old business. Is there anything from the council? Okay, new business then. First item up is a food and beverage request from the Welfare League or Capa Delta Phi. John?
Sue Muntz is here tonight to make a presentation for us.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. This is our 87th year of providing a meal at Christmas for families in Lebanon. We took it over back in '62 from Mr. Yulen. He was the secret Santa in Lebanon at that time, and he wanted to retire to Florida, so we were fortunate enough to get the chance to take over, and we don't regret a minute of it. We help families with a meal. We gather donations through businesses, patrons in Lebanon that would like to make donations. We have people sign up through the caring center, or they can call me. They fill out an application, and we try and adopt out some of these families. Like churches will call me and say, "We'd like to have a family with two little kids." So all, and all these people have okay that their names can be given out. So that is very gratifying. It's been kind of slow the last few years, but the rest of the families that have signed up, they all get a food basket through the caring center. We buy the food, we box it, but the patrons go there to pick it up. And we have meat certificates through the Lebanon IGA. We do all of our shopping in Lebanon, all local grocery stores, and it's been very successful. And donations can be sent to Whitney Hughes and Lamar at 120 North Lebanon Street, and we are 501(c) for nonprofit, and I can give that number to people that send me a note or call me, and my phone number. I don't have a house phone anymore, so it's a cellphone is 765-894-0051. So do you have any questions that I could answer?
John?
On Wednesday, November 13th, Sue and Joyce Douglas met with the Lebanon City Food and Beverage Committee, Rob and I and Sierra. They made a presentation. The Capa Delta Phi Lebanon Welfare League has been coming to the council for the last several years. They are a very positive organization for our community, especially during the times of the holidays and things like that when people are in need. We greatly appreciate everything that they do. They currently, as of November 13th, had over 80 applications already, and I'm sure that's grown since we've had our discussion.
I haven't checked the last few days, but I'm sure.
And it's just, it's amazing the time, effort that these ladies put in to put together programs, meals for the needy here in our city. People, and I noticed in the paper today, they had a photo, and a lot of people are getting fed, and there's just a few of these ladies doing it today. And I remember when you started years ago, you had a younger group?
A lot younger, in the twenties, but now we have 16 active members.
So that's a lot of work. It's something that our community needs. Like Sue said, they're a 401(c) nonprofit. If families wanted to make a donation themselves, they can contact Sue. She gave the number 765-894-0051. And families, if they want to, they can call. She'll select a family for them. They'll give a size or whatever the family, what is needed, things like that, and they can purchase the ingredients, the food, the items and things like that, and make the donations and prepare things and get them to those families as well. So this is just their organization. They're just ahead of what's going on out here, and they're trying to encompass people around the community to also provide. So after the meeting, we had a vote, and of course, we voted in favor of the organization. And unfortunately, the maximum we can give is $1,500, and that was our proposal for tonight's presentation to the Lebanon City Council.
Thank you, John. Any questions for Sue from the council or for John from the committee? You have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? All right. Thank you, Sue, for all the work, the great work you do.
Happy holidays.
Same to you. Okay, next item up, this is Resolution 2024-36, confirming Resolution 2024-23 regarding an economic revitalization area and approving certain real property tax payment deductions, incentives, agreement, and property tax exemption pursuant to Indiana Code 61.110-44. We have Jessica Schwartz from the Boone County Economic Development Corporation to present the discussion tonight.
Well, good evening, councilors. I'm here this evening to bring forward a recommendation for incentives for Facebook Meta for the Leap District. It'll be for the location of one campus, so four buildings with the potential of six total campuses, 24 buildings on 1,400 acres in the Leap District. They expect to employ 80 full-time permanent employees with an average wage of $36 an hour, which is above the both Boone County and Indiana average wage. The initial campus has an estimated $400 million in real property investment and an additional $400 million in personal investment. We are recommending the following abatement schedule for this company, so 10-year property tax abatement, years 1 through 10 at 50%, and a 35-year property tax abatement, years 1 through 35 at 100%, beginning at 100%. Total collection of property taxes, so these would be the benefits to Lebanon and Boone County, including this abatement recommendation, is $80,800 in property taxes over a 15-year horizon, estimated collection of $33,868,643 of community impact payments on a 15-year horizon, annual collection of $29,000 in local income tax, so about $450,000 over a 15-year horizon, and a positive ROI. Thank you.
Yeah, so I do want to highlight Jessica. On the personal property tax, it was 100% for 35 years. However, there was a community impact payment associated with that of $1.5 million per year, and that was also chained to CPI or the Consumer Price Index. So that would go up based on inflation, other factors, things like that as determined. So this actually keeps the real value of that community impact payment over those years, so.
And that impact fee, $1.5 million, is per phase, correct? So Phase 1, it would be $1.5 million, four buildings, Phase 1?
Per phase, every year, annually.
These two is another $1.5.
Yes.
So in the six phases, that's $9 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the property tax collections, that was based solely on just Phase 1. You guys said we have the agreement in front of us, and I can have Rob read it here, but this contemplates future phases, doesn't guarantee or promise future phases, but it's contemplated in there, and it sets out the same parameters incentive offer for all those future phases as that goes forward. But all the tax revenue collections, that is strictly for just Phase 1.
Okay. The $800 million. $800 million is Phase 1.
Correct, yeah, on the real, yep.
Questions for Jessica from the council? Rob, can you read the resolution, please?
Thank you, mayor, council. Resolution 2024-36 is a confirmatory resolution of Resolution 2024-23 that we heard at the last meeting, determining that certain qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met, and qualifying certain real property for tax abatement, as well as certain personal property for property tax exemption. Pursuant to Indiana law, this city and this council has the right and opportunity to abate payment of real and personal property taxes for real estate and personal property located by this council to be an economic revitalization area. In accordance with Indiana law, this council adopted Resolution 2024-23, which is attached as Exhibit A to this resolution, on October 28, 2024, designating approximately 1,435 acres located within the city Leap District as the area. Exhibits A and B, it's all described in there, as well as a statement of benefits or an SB 1, real property that's attached as well as Exhibit B, and it's made a part of here. And it describes the proposed project and what Ms. Schwartz just indicated. This project includes the construction and development of a data center consisting of real and personal property, including a building or group of buildings for construction. And again, all that's described herein. There will be a public hearing shortly after this reading. Also in this resolution is an economic development incentive, property tax exemption, and abatement agreement, and you've received a copy of that, and that's attached here as Exhibit A. Pursuant to that, as the mayor and Ms. Schwartz indicated, there's also a $1.5 million community impact payment that's contemplated again for each of the phases of the building. Pursuant to Indiana law, this council may enter into an agreement to grant property tax exemption if such property qualifies for that. So therefore, be it resolved, this council finds as follows. The proposed project will be located in the area which has been confirmed as an economic revitalization area, and this council hereby takes final action as contemplated by Indiana law with respect to confirming the adoption of the declaratory resolution. Based upon the information in the SB 1 Statement of Benefits, this council makes the following findings. The estimate of $400 million as the cost of improvements to be constructed is reasonable for projects of that nature. The estimate of hiring at least 50 employees who will be employed can reasonably be expected to result from the project. Again, the council understanding this is just an estimate, and the applicant can agree, again, that additional employment may be needed or maybe a little bit less for the abatement. The estimate of the average salaries of those individuals who will be employed will be at least 125% of the average wage for Boone County. The totality of the benefits is sufficient to justify the granting of real property tax abatement. The statement or the SB 1 submitted by the applicant is hereby approved. Again, real property tax deductions for the project are approved, and that accounts for a 10-year abatement from the assessed valuation being 50% of all 10 years. And again, as set forth in the incentive agreement, that is a phased process. So if six campuses are built, then each of those phases, the campuses, will start over with the 10-year abatement, and as the mayor, Ms. Schwartz, indicated, there'll be that $1.5 million community impact payment as well, as well as the personal property exemption for those periods. Pursuant to Indiana law, this council, again, will cause to be filed a certified copy of this resolution with the Boone County Auditor. Council has approved the personal property tax exemption, and the council has undertaken all required action contained within the Indiana statute. Connection with the personal property tax exemption, abatement, and the community impact payment, this council authorized and directs the mayor and the president council to finalize and execute the incentives agreement in substantially the same form that you've received, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, Rob. Just to give some context for everybody here, too, I started conversations with Meta Facebook about two years ago, so it's been a long process to try to attract them to the Leap site. Initially, we're actually looking at a different site in the Leap District, but then as the 1,400 or so acres became available, frankly, I think they got very excited about the potential for that site because it allowed them to, I think, do more than maybe what they were initially expanding or contemplating. And so certainly with every phase being, you know, $800 million or so in 2024, you know, this is a pretty significant investment for us, right? So if you consider all six phases, that's close to $4.8 billion potential for the city, hopefully, as things progress forward. So, you know, at the last meeting, we had questions from some of the citizens of, you know, how long is this land going to be owned by the IEDC? You know, I wanted to tell him publicly, like, well, not very long. We actually have a, if all things go well tonight, they actually plan to close on the land before the end of the year, which would then allow them to start the planning process expeditiously and move forward quickly on this project. It's not every day you get an $800 million lead in your community, and I think it's a, as you've all seen in the briefing, this is a great opportunity for the city from a, both from a job creation standpoint, but also just from a capital investment and what this can do for our community. It's a strong ROI for us. Obviously, it's been, was a long process to get to this point, negotiate that with them, and I've always appreciated the council's trust. You guys have placed me to negotiate on your behalf these deals. So with that, if there's any questions or discussion from council, and then we'll have the public hearing on this resolution.
I think for me.
Anything for Jessica, our new IEDC? Okay, then, at this time then, I will open the public hearing on Resolution 2024-36. If there's any public comment, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and then keep comments to three minutes if possible.
You know who I am. Jody Stewart.
I don't remember your name. What?
Jody Stewart. Hi, Mike. I am still opposed to this project. And I'm going to stay opposed. The, I just found out about this data center tonight at the previous meeting, so I would like to know where this data center is going. Do we have a location?
It's the 1,400 acres, the TIFF district that was created the last meeting.
Okay, and where is that district?
West on 32, just north of 32.
North of 32. At what intersections, please?
About from 200 to about 500, 450, thank you.
450, and is this on the north side of 32 or on the south side of 32?
North side of 32.
North side of 32. Okay, and I'm still opposed to this whole water deal that you guys got going with Citizens. You know that. I've already talked about that. This whole water deal that was passed is not using a fund that is meant to use. It's for a clean drinking water fund. And Mr. Shine, you never answered my question last time about Baker Tilly. Were you aware that they are not a licensed CPA firm?
With all due respect, this is a public hearing, and you're free to talk.
I understand it.
It doesn't need to be back and forth. I'm happy to talk to you outside the meeting, though.
Perfect. Last night on Facebook, or this weekend on Facebook, there was a neighboring community, which is Thorntown, that posted a photo of the water that they are expected to drink, and it's pretty poor. I wanted to bring some for you tonight, mayor, and pour you a glass so that you could drink it, because they are a neighboring community, and we are affecting their water supply, and we are affecting the quality of their water. I've told you in the very beginning that I hoped you dotted all your i's and crossed all your t's, and I don't believe you have. That'll be the next issue. I would suggest that anybody on this council tonight, when you vote, that you put afterwards, per council advice, cover your asses because you already have some lawsuits against you. And so I would make you put that in this when you agree to it. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Further public comment? Seeing no sudden movements, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2024-36. Any further discussion, comments from council? Okay, at this time then, we entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2024-36.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-36.
You have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? Resolution 2024-36 passes unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, next, thank you, Jessica. Next up will be Resolution 2024-37. This is approving Plan Commission Order, ordering redevelopment commission, resolution establishing the project Leap Phase 1 Economic Development Area and Allocation Area. This is Rob, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, mayor, council, Resolution 2024-36 is statutory procedure, which is a resolution that confirms Resolution, I'm sorry, confirms actually the Plan Commission Order, and this area is going to be really an overlay of what we just approved on Resolution 2024-36. So this is part of the process of establishing an economic development area. So in the last resolution, we established an economic revitalization area which allows for real property, personal property, tax abatement, tax exemption. So this is part of the process that allows us to take that different piece of it, if you will, to set up an allocation area or an economic development area. And you'll hear some discussions later in this meeting that'll discuss the first reading of the bonds that are involving the water that's going to be brought up from Indianapolis up to the Leap area. So this is another piece of that, and I'll go ahead and read it, and then again, I'm happy to answer any questions from you from there. So again, Resolution 2024-37 is a resolution that approves the order of the Lebanon Plan Commission approving a resolution of the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission declaring an area in the city of Lebanon as an economic development area. And whereas on November 12, 2024, the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission approved and adopted Resolution 2024-06, which is a declaratory resolution, that designated and declared an economic development area to be known as Project Leap Phase 1 Economic Development Area. There was also an economic development plan for the economic development area. All that's defined as the plan and the economic development area. November 18, 2024, the Lebanon Plan Commission approved and adopted its Plan Commission Order 2024-01, which is attached to this resolution, is Exhibit A, that determined the declaratory resolution in the plan conformed to the plan of development for the city of Lebanon, and designated such resolution as a written order of the Plan Commission approving the declaratory resolution in the plan. This council is, again, the legislative body of the city and desires to approve the Plan Commission Order to permit the Redevelopment Commission to continue to proceed with the development and redevelopment contemplated by the declaratory resolution. Therefore, be it solved, this council finds that the declaratory resolution and the plan conformed to the plan of development of the city. The Plan Commission Order is hereby approved, ratified, and confirmed in all respect, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect in accordance with Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Again, to put that little legalese in the bush a little bit, essentially, it sets up the framework that allows us to more or less use the revenues created by this site to do the bonds and help with the infrastructure and all those things that would need to be to serve the site with it, more or less. So any questions, concerns from council on that? Okay, this time then, we entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2024-37.
A motion that we approve, Resolution 2024-37.
Motion approved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Dick. All in favor, say aye.
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 As opposed, that is approved. Thank you, council. All right, next up will be the water, water supply and wastewater capacity pre-allocation agreement, and this is Jeff Jacob.
Good evening, council, Mayor. This evening with me is Scott Miller from Baker Tilly, Ed Baskel, and Ryan Ottinger. I do have a brief update. Many months ago, or a few months ago, I was in front of the council, and we were discussing the approval of the water supply agreement with Citizens Water, that both boards had approved that. And I'm pleased to report tonight that that document has been fully executed by Citizens and Lebanon Utilities, and so we're, we're off and running in that regard. In front of you this evening is a pre-allocation memorandum of understanding for Project Domino. They have requested-
Hey, Jeff, you can say the name now, it's now public.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Trained not to.
I know, I understand.
So, the pre-allocation agreement for Meta Facebook. And thank you for that correction. They have requested a phased water supply of 3 million gallons per day and wastewater of up to 1.5 million gallons per day. And that's phased from 2027 through 2031. Coincidentally, that matches a, the phasing in the water supply agreement, which was just, just signed. To remind everyone, in 2027, we start out with an additional two MGD of water. 2028 plus an additional eight, for a total of 10. 2029 plus two MGD for a total of 12. 2029, the second half, an additional five MGD for a total of 17, bringing us to a total of plus eight in 2031 of 25 additional MGD. Now, this pre-allocation agreement is similar to what you have approved before. I'm pleased to report to you that the utility board approved this this evening in a special meeting this afternoon. Vote was four to one. I can share with you that one of the main objections, that one of the utility board members was not knowing who the user was. And now that that cat is out of the bag, a couple of things that are important to note in this agreement. The Baker Tilly report that forms the basis of the bond ordinance relies on some assumptions in that, that Meta Facebook will be the user in the site and those water allocations. So in essence, these are related in that this has helped induce the, the bond ordinance, and this has induced, helped induce IEDC and IFA contributing the funding for the bond ordinance for the water project, and eventually the wastewater improvements as well. And so, the, a couple of things to note, while the infrastructure, and again, I know we've talked about this, but while the infrastructure is being, being isolated to the LEAP district in terms of the cost, the non-LEAP ratepayers should not be impacted from a rate standpoint. We've worked hard to isolate the, the non-LEAP ratepayers away from, from that exposure. They will, however, the city will receive the benefit of additional water capacity and allocation, as well as infrastructure benefits. The, as we get closer to closing on the bond, we will make this similar pre-allocation agreement available to other developers and other users. So we will, you know, shelved projects that have been approved in the city, we will be sending this agreement to them for their review and consideration. A couple of notes, there was an on-the-fly edit that was made to Section 24 and Section 7(c) that I think I mentioned to you, that was of a request of the utility and a clarifying edit. So I'm happy to answer any questions for you all, and look forward to your support with the approval of the agreement.
So Jeff, just to clarify, so this is essentially pre-allocating future water.
Correct.
Obviously, we've reached our allocation capacity for them, for our current system.
That's correct.
So this is essentially pre-allocating that, a part of that initial two, and then parts of those kind of future phases as would be needed based on that.
Exactly. The, the agreement, as you'll see, has three phases or tiers to it, and that matches the future allocations that Citizens and, then coincidentally, Lebanon Utilities on a wholesale, as a wholesale purchaser, will be able to supply. So again, you know, this, this doesn't happen without that IEDC and IFA funding, which we believe that this is an inducement to help move that along.
Are there any questions from council? Sandra?
On pre-allocations for this from the water utilities, that, there's going to be enough left over, though. Lebanon's going to have enough for the city, for the people, so that if they want to build or add or do whatever, they're still going to have it. We're not going to pre-allocate everything out.
Correct. Great question. And what, the mayor and utility staff are working with the development community and will be memorializing this in short order. Projects that have been approved by the city will receive a similar styled agreement, asking what their phasing and what their realistic water needs will be starting in 2027 and beyond. And so it's our hope to reach allocation agreements with those, those users. Additionally, we will hold back some capacity for, for other users, but recognize that those users that we're talking about are all non-LEAP users that will, that have had approved projects.
So there's been some other announcements of plans to locate in the LEAP district. We saw Lilly's announcement about the Madison Foundry. So similarly, we would essentially enter into a similar pre-allocation agreement with that, right? But, so of that two in 2027, we're still balancing, making sure that we have enough, but between Facebook Meta and then also the Lilly's, that Madison Foundry, there's enough, essentially, and they're, actually, and they're, well, actually, the Madison Foundry would be 28, though, correct?
No, I believe there'll be some, some take in 2027.
But then also there, but then there are expansions as well, too. There's enough to cover of that initial two. So it's kind of, there's, there's still a remainder even after we've, we're not allocating that full two, correct?
I just want to make sure that, you know, the city has extra two.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we've been keeping all these plates spinning, more or less, make sure everything kind of can fit in together. Yes.
That's a good, good question. Thank you.
But, but now, a lot of the projects that are in LEAP, just based on their size, complexity, they, they have such a long construction timeframe that we're now entering into a period where, by the time they are complete and ready to need water, the additional water from Citizens will be here by then, too. Any other questions from council?
No.
Okay. Any public comment concerning the water and wastewater capacity pre-allocation agreement?
Would you like for me to state my name again? All right. So I sat in on this meeting that Mr. Jacobs just mentioned, and Mr. Smith's main concern was not the fact that he didn't know what was coming. His concern was that the LLC that has been formed for this project was formed in Delaware, and in Delaware, you don't have to list who is part of the LLC. So who owns the LLC of the company that is coming? That was Mr. Smith's concern, was that he could not see the members that were on the board of the company that is requesting to come to our city. Also, there was mention about the water allotment that's coming and the phasing that's going to be done. And Mr. Jacobs, I believe you just said, there should be enough water for the citizens of Lebanon. So that is totally different from what you've told at the meeting. You said there will be, and that the citizens of Lebanon are not going to be affected with this water. So there is a little bit of difference here in what is being told at one meeting and another meeting. So I just want to make you guys clear that Mr. Smith's concern was that this LLC, this company that is wanting to come here, there are no listed investors in it. Thank you.
We did just announce the company's name at this meeting, so. We did announce, we did announce what the company's name was earlier in the meeting.
I understand that.
Okay.
That was Mr. Smith's concern at the meeting.
Okay. Jeff, do you want to respond? She brought you up.
So, you know, and, and specific to water allocations, you know, we have worked hard to make sure that we're talking with the development community and asking what their realistic demands are. Just as a point, you know, there has been one user in the LEAP district that we have allocated water to at this juncture. That's it. That's Eli Lilly. Their expanded project, yes, we have counted that, but these are all, all within the corporate limits of Lebanon. Lebanon has plenty of water to supply to its current users. This is an allocation issue for future growth, I think, as you all understand. So, thank you, hope that answers that question, and I look forward to your vote on this.
Thank you, Jeff. Any final comments, discussion from council? We're, Jody, we're done with public comment this time. Thank you, though.
All right.
Any further discussions from council? Okay. At this time, then, would entertain a motion concerning the water supply and wastewater capacity pre-allocation agreement.
Make a motion, we approve the water supply and wastewater capacity pre-allocation agreement.
If motion approves, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? All right, that is approved. Thank you, council. All right, next up, the ordinance 2024-31. This is concerning the Waterworks Revenue Bonds for LEAP Project Phase One. This is also amending ordinance 2019-01's on first reading.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, I'm going to introduce Mike Dean of our office. I think he can give a backdrop as we approach both this ordinance and the next ordinance that'll deal with the water.
Sure. All right, thank you, Rob. My name is Michael Dean. I am from Dinsmore as well. I work with Rob on a lot of different items up in here, up here in Lebanon, based out of our Cincinnati office, but have some Indiana connections. Good to be back in a 765 area code again. I went to school in Anderson, Indiana, Anderson University. So, great to, to maintain these connections and, and finally get to meet you all. It's been about almost two years since Rob and I started working together. So, again, to the matter at hand, ordinance 2024 and, sorry, 2024-34 and 2024-35 are tied together. They accomplish different purposes, but all for the same goal. 2024-34 is the one you have in front of you right now. That is an amending ordinance, which amends 2019-01 and 2021-24. These are the 2019 and 2021 bond ordinances for the existing Waterworks Revenue Bonds of the city. So as Jeff explained, and I think has probably was explained at the rate ordinance discussion a couple of weeks ago, we're going to establish, or we have established, this new service area for the LEAP district. This resolution, or sorry, this ordinance will basically cut off the extension of that existing service area into LEAP district. So effectively, IFA, as the bondholder, will consent to the adoption of this ordinance, which will then segregate the rate districts officially. So the existing civil rate district, as it's defined in the rate ordinance from a couple of weeks ago, will continue to be, continue to secure the outstanding 2019 and 2021 bonds, while the new LEAP rate district will then be separated off and only secure the upcoming bond issue that we're talking about. So this is a necessary thing as, if the rate district were just expanded and we didn't have this ordinance, that we would have the new LEAP water district also being pledged to the 2019 and 2021 bonds. IFA is agreeable to this as well. They have indicated that they'll provide a separate consent document once this is adopted in connection with the closing of the 2024 bond issue.
Thank you, Mike. Clear as mud, everybody? Makes sense? All kidding aside, though, I think it makes sense and kind of echoes what we've been trying to do this whole time to really exemplify, or show that we are making sure that LEAP is paying for LEAP, and we're protecting our current civil, civil rate waterpayers at this moment, right? So we want to make sure that these are separated between the two, and that's what this helps us do. So, any questions for Mike before I read the ordinance?
Are those new people going to have a different rate that they pay?
Yes, so it, so the LEAP, there's a, there's a different, it's about, it's $8 per 100 cubic feet of, of water, and then there's different availability fees that are kind of, we backed into based on all the, the costs and things like that. So there are, there will to, be two different rate structures. But as you mentioned at our, at our discussion the last time, you know, maybe over time in the future, as the debt is retired, you know, those, those rates may come back together one day, but until, we don't want the civil ratepayers paying for any debt in the LEAP district. So that's why we're isolating the two. So maybe one in the future, those come back together, but for the foreseeable future, they would be separate rates.
Yeah, thank you.
Questions for Mike? Yeah, probably free to please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll just summarize this, because Mike did a pretty good job of going through. But again, this ordinance 2024-34 amends ordinance 2019-01, which authorizes issuance of Waterworks Revenue Bonds as amended by ordinance 2021-24. So again, therefore be it resolved, subject to the consent of the IFA or the Indiana Finance Authority. The prior ordinance is hereby amended to redefine net revenues pledged to the repayment of the prior bonds as those net revenues of the city's municipal waterworks generated only from the civil water district, such that the net revenues generated from the LEAP water district that would otherwise have been pledged to the prior bonds are available to be pledged to the LEAP district water bonds. And again, except as modified as this ordinance, all other provisions of the prior ordinance shall remain in full force and effect.
Thank you, Rob. That ordinance is around our first reading. Is there any public comment concerning ordinance 2024-34 at this time? Okay. We'll take that up at our next meeting, which will be December 9th at 7:15 p.m. All right, next item up is ordinance 2024-35. This is the Waterworks Revenue Bonds, LEAP Project Phase One. It's also on first reading as well.
So Mayor and Council, we have Mike Dean again here, but also Scott Miller, Baker Tilly's in the back, too. So, to extend, if you want to give a backdrop.
All right, I can kind of kick it off. Thank you again. Again, this is tied with the ordinance we just did a first reading of. This is a first reading of the actual bond ordinance. So this authorizes up to $250 million over several series of bonds that are planned to be issued through 2028 for the LEAP district water improvements, separate and apart from the wastewater, which we'll, I think, dive into in early 2025. This is a fairly complicated structure of the transaction, so I won't bore you with a lot of the legal details. But IFA is planned to be the purchaser through the state revolving loan fund for drinking water. And we've been having calls, Rob, I don't know how long now, for months, to try to get some clarity and get everything together. We are getting pretty close. What we've provided tonight with this ordinance are drafts. I'm going to be very clear, those are drafts of some of the financing documents that have been put together to date. They consist of a master trust agreement, a, an underlying bond indenture that the city of Lebanon will enter into, and then a financial assistance agreement, which is standard with any kind of IFA SRF drinking water loan. The security for this includes a number of items. The availability fees, connection fees that come from the rate ordinance in the LEAP district, and then also a portion of the monthly charge for the water district as well, will go towards the bond repayments. Also coming in is a significant contribution from IEDC to pay interest on these bonds for the first three years or so. And then they will also fund, IEDC will also fund a debt service reserve fund that will secure these bonds as well. In addition to that, we have discussed just earlier tonight, the TIF revenues coming from the, sorry, I've been trained to Jeff Domino Facebook Meta site, which I think Scott will have early, Scott and his team are putting together some numbers to show what that will look like in the overall scheme of things. The IDD revenues from the Lilly site will also be pledged from IEDC into these bond issues. That does not include the 12% allocated to the city. That is still the city's money. This includes the 88% on the other side, on the state side. So that's a summary, I guess, of the revenue pledges that go towards the bonds. I'll let Scott Miller speak to a lot of the financing terms, but to the extent there are any legal questions, happy to answer those as well.
So there was a comment-
So, there was a comment earlier made about whether the, using the IFA, when the funds we're using was a legal application of those funds. Could you speak to that at all? I know you're a bond attorney necessarily, but you've been always been in these meetings.
Legal application of the IFA's funds.
Of the drinking, clean drinking water funds.
Sure. As I understand it, every state has an SRF program, state revolving loan fund program, and Ohio is known as OWDA, and here it's IFA. They run their SRF program separately. It is, to my knowledge, it's providing drinking water. It's a water supply-focused type of financing program. There's a, I think, separate programs for wastewater, stormwater, and other types of issues that, infrastructure issues that need to be addressed. To that end, I will, I will shut because that's about the extent of my knowledge on the state revolving fund.
We've had a statement, though, from, we've had a statement from the IFA, though, saying that this is a legal use of these, of these funds, correct?
Well, yeah, and I would need more than two hands to count the number of attorneys that are working on this project, that have looked into all of the different facets and aspects here, myself included. So, no, we're comfortable with, with where the financing stands and that everything will be authorized appropriately. Just want to make sure, I'll lay any concerns of the public I have.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mike, you said this was a draft, so I assume by, in two weeks, when you come back or when it comes back before us, it's going to be a solid number?
I, I hope so. I hope so. We are on a very, let's say, loose closing schedule at this point. We do have a date in mind, but there's still a lot of work to be done, a lot of wood to be chopped by the attorneys, by the financial professionals, just to get us to the other end of this at the closing. We plan for December 30th closing. And I'm hopeful we'll hit that. I think there's a path there. And so, we're all working really hard to get that done. But yes, in two weeks, we hope to have the second reading and final adoption. And again, in terms of financial terms, I'll let Scott Miller speak to those. But that is our goal, to have everything authorized on the 9th and finally adopted, and then work towards closing on December 30th.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Other questions for Mike before I bring Scott Miller up? Okay, thank you, Mike. Scott from Umba, or Baker Tilly. You've been Umba for what? Six years?
I still have that, too. Yeah, we're five and a half years now, and I still do it. So, Scott Miller with Baker Tilly. Mike did a great job explaining the ordinance. As far as financial parameters go, the bonds are anticipated to be amortized over 35 years. We have been told to assume an interest rate now of 4.1%, which is close to what the state got on their financing in October that will be used to at least partially fund your portion of the project. We talked a little bit about the rates. The rate ordinance was approved last meeting, and Mike described all the revenues that will be coming in to repay the bonds. That's important, since this is somewhat of a timing issue in terms of needing funds to construct the projects, and then having that coincide with the timing of the new users and when their facilities are ready to take the water. So, that's why we have all these additional revenue sources upfront. And over time, hopefully, as the usage in the Leap District grows, we'll be able to back down the reliance on, first, the TIF, and then the IDD revenues over time. So, with that, happy to answer any questions that you may have on the financing.
Any questions on the financing structure for Scott?
Yeah, in, in the past, we've had comments made that someone will say that, you know, Baker Tilly, they're not CPAs or whatever. Could you explain what the difference possibly between consultants or, you know, this side of it, the consulting side, versus what a public accountant would do?
Well, first question is, Scott, are you a CPA?
I am a licensed CPA and have been since 1998.
Anyway, could you just address that question?
And I think I know where that misunderstanding lies, and just looking online a little bit ago, Baker Tilly is a, we are the 10th largest CPA firm in the country. We provide consulting, tax assurance, in my case, municipal advisory services all across the country. In Indianapolis, we have 100 and, I don't know, 30 or 40 people or so that are based out of our Indianapolis office. Some of them are CPA, some of them are not. As you just heard, I'm a licensed CPA. I'm also a licensed Series 50 Municipal Advisor and Series 54 Municipal Advisor Principal. What I do for utilities involves both CPA activities, but also the financing activities that we're talking about tonight. So, I think where that misunderstanding lies is that if you go to the Secretary of State's website and do a business search for Baker Tilly, what comes up is a listing, I don't know, there's seven or eight different listings with our various business aliases, but it's listed as a foreign limited liability company. Foreign simply means that we are not domiciled. Our headquarters is not in Indiana. Our headquarters happens to be in Chicago. When we were Umba, we were a domestic limited liability company because we were specifically headquartered in Indiana. So, I think that's perhaps where this misunderstanding lies, is that we are just headquartered in a different state rather than, rather than Indiana. But we are, we have, I don't know, 15 or 20, actually more than that. I've lost track of how many licensed CPAs we have in the, in the Indiana offices alone.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure. Any other questions for Scott? Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Rob, I'll have you read the ordinance. I'm sure it's a thin one, right?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, council. Ordinance 2024-35, again, is an ordinance for this city authorizing acquisition, construction, and installation by the city, certain extensions and improvements to the city's waterworks utility to benefit the Leap District Development Project, as well as the issuance and sale revenue bonds, and to provide funds for the payment of the cost thereof in the collection and distribution of the revenues of the Water Works Utility and other related matters. This is several pages, so I'm just going to hit the highlights, which you've been provided this. So, whereas, again, in anticipation of the Leap District, the city, through the Utility Service Board, entered into a water supply agreement between the Department of Public Utilities for the City of Indianapolis, DBA, the citizens' water, and the Utility Service Board here in Lebanon, which provides that citizens will supply the Lebanon utilities with up to 25 million gallons per day of wholesale water service to the city and the Leap District. Again, in this ordinance, it contemplates that the citizens' water supply agreement will be an amount, approximate amount of $450 million, and there will be tax-exempt bonds and an aggregate par amount of up to $700 million. As, has been described in here, and the city is also authorized to issue no more than $250 million of bonds. The city is determined to establish a separate service area for the purposes of those rates and charges for the financing of this water system that's described in here, as well as the Leap District, and that's all defined in here and set forth in Exhibits A, B, and C. I'm going to just then touch on, there's numerous pages in here that talks about the actual process with issuance of bonds, similar to what we've done in the past. So, Section 1 describes the authorization of the project, the service area designation. Again, this project for the city will not exceed the sum of $250 million. It's described in here. Again, the council is designated two separate service areas. I want to be clear on that because you've heard that a number of times, but just so we're clear, you have the civil water district and the Leap Water District. And what we're talking about here is Leap Water District. Again, that's set forth in Exhibit C. Section 2 talks about the issuance of the notes and the bonds. Section 3 talks about just the technical requirements. Actually, most of these hereafter talk about the technical requirements of the bonds, the paying agent, the book entry position, provisions, and that's several pages. Section 4 talks about the redemption of the bonds on page 10. Section 5 is the execution and the negotiability. The form of the bond is set forth in Exhibit A. And then Section 7 talks about the sale of the bonds. Continuing disclosure. Section 8 further talks about the sale of the bonds for several pages. Section 9 discusses the financial records. Section 10 talks about the accrued interest. Section 11, the use of the proceeds. Section 12 talks about the pledge of the revenues. Section 13 discusses the funds and the accounts, such as a sinking fund that will be established in here. Section 14 on page 18 talks about the maintenance of the investments and of the accounts. Section 15 talks about the feasibility of the bonds, the rate covenant, additional bonds and notes. And then, as well as further covenants of the city are set forth on page 20. And again, then we talk about Section 19 amendments with certain consents of the bondholders for several pages, investment of the funds, tax covenants on page 24. And then, we just address what I would just say are similar provisions that you've seen in other ordinances, such as headings. If there's any conflict, and the effective date of the ordinance will be in accordance with Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. The ordinance is under our first reading. We'll take that up at our December 9th council meeting, which will be at 7:15. Is there any public comment concerning ordinance 2024-35 at this time?
Let me gather my thoughts here. The Indiana Finance Authority, I understand, has agreed that this is, is legal. However, I'm wondering why we are rushing this through and why this needs to be signed by December the 30th. Because I believe the state of Indiana is going to be doing a water study next year. That's part of the thing that is going to be coming up in our Senate session. And we are going to be discussing how Indiana's water is in trouble. And it's funny that you guys are just pushing this through. I mean, I know, speed is the thing, right? I forget what your name is, but I know you talked at the very first meeting. Speed is the thing, and so we have to get this done before December 30th, before the new, the new members come in. So, that's my thoughts here. And you have to do the crime before you do the time.
Thank you for your comments. All right, that concludes ordinance 2024-35. Excuse me. Next will be Resolution 2024-38. This approving Plan Commission order approving redevelopment commission declaratory resolution expanding the consolidated economic area for New Cold. Jessica?
Good evening again. I'll share the same thing that I did at the redevelopment commission meeting, given their approval a few weeks ago. One of our local Lebanon businesses is seeking expansion once again. So, you may have heard of previous expansions. Their first one was in November of 2022, and then they just finished Phase 2 expansion in October of 2024, and they're back at it again. So, they're seeking to increase the New Cold Economic Development Area to include the 289-acre parcel of land south of New Cold's existing Lebanon facility. It will be located, the proposed project is located at the intersection of Middle Jamestown Road and West 200 South, so just south of its existing building. They had requested TIF funds through the method of a developer-backed bond, which means that the developer, in this case, New Cold, will purchase the bond and be required to pay the debt of service of all future debt payment responsibilities. We had recommended and gotten it approved by RDC, the bond in the amount of 20.5 million, excuse, excuse me, TIF bond, based in part on the financial analysis completed by Baker Tilly. The TIF bond amount is commensurate with New Cold's level of capital investment, job creation, and infrastructure costs, which are estimated at 20 to 25 million. So, this will be a, again, 289-acre parcel of land south of their existing facility. The TIF funds will be used for the construction and equipping of a new 1 million square foot, $475 million automated cold storage, expected to create between 200, 250 full-time jobs, in addition to several hundred temporary jobs during the build phase of this project. Another important piece to note is that this project is self-funded by them for stormwater, utility, roadway, and water improvements.
So, Jessica, just to clarify here. So, essentially, what we're doing here is, so we created an allocation area to district for New Cold earlier, and this is just expanding that to a new site. They still have not received official approval through planning. We're still negotiating. Ben, correct, they've not, they haven't received or they have not? Yeah. So, essentially, this is setting up the structure for that TIF district with it. So.
You for correcting me.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure it hasn't, like, been through our official planning yet, but it's, it's setting up the TIF district to allow the structure for the move.
Correct.
So, so if you're keeping track at home, that'd be essentially $1.2 billion of investment in this meeting tonight in Lebanon?
Yes. So, they're at, with this project, they'll be.
No, I meant just tonight, between.
Oh, just tonight, I'm sorry. 25, 20.5 million.
For their costs, but their, their project's 400 million?
For 400 and, their total cost. Is that the 400, I believe, excuse me, that's the 475 million?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I was just making a, I was just trying to, sorry, I shouldn't have said that.
If it helps to construction start date, they're planning 2025, what they call first pallet in, ready to go early quarter 1, 2027.
Any questions for council for Jessica at this time? Okay, Rob?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, council. This Resolution 2024-38 is similar to what we heard earlier with the establishment of the economic development area with the Leap Phase One, the Meta Site. And so, as the mayor and Ms. Schwartz indicated, this is New Cold Phase 3. And so, what they're doing again is, we're just amending the allocation area, and this is part of the process. It started with the RDC, went to the Plan Commission. It's here before the council to consider improvement of what the Plan Commission did. It'll need to go back then to the redevelopment commission, and then there's some further steps, though, as you indicated, that it'll go through, so.
And this isn't the actual incentive offer. This is strictly just changing the territory of the district.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll just, I'll just hit the highlights here. But again, this resolution is for this council approving an order of the Lebanon Plan Commission, which approves a resolution in Lebanon Redevelopment Commission, again, amending the Lebanon Consolidated Economic Development Area, and establishes supplemental development plan and allocation area, again, regarding basically New Cold Phase 3. So, I won't go through the history of the allocation area, but that's in this resolution. On November 12th, 2024, the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission approved and adopted Resolution 2024-07, which approves certain amendments, again, to the declaratory resolution and consolidated plan. On November 18th, 2024, the Lebanon Plan Commission approved and adopted its Plan Commission Order 2024-02, which is attached as Exhibit A, and it determined that the amending declaratory resolution and plan supplement conformed to the plan of development of the city, and designated such resolution as a written order of the Plan Commission approving the amending declaratory resolution and plans supplement as required by Indiana law. This council, again, is the legislative body, desires to approve the Plan Commission Order, and finds that the amending declaratory resolution and plan supplement conformed to the plan of the development of the city. The Plan Commission Order is hereby approved, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect in accordance with Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions on this from council?
It's already been approved by the Plan Commission, or it's coming up for a vote?
They have to actually submit their, actually, Ben, you want to touch on where it is in the process. It has not been, their actual site plan has not been approved?
Yeah, they have filed, but it's, but it has not been approved.
Yeah, they have files, but it's, but it has not been approved. Yeah, so they're just going, starting the planning review process currently.
So similarly how we did, we created the TIF district for, for Meta, right? Obviously, they have not been approved yet either, like through our planning commission. This is just drawing that, expanding that area of where they are today to include the new parcels that they, they want to develop. They still have to go through our planning approvals and go through that. So this is strictly just the mechanism to expand that area. Does that make sense? Yeah. And frankly, this is also not the incentive agreement either, right? That's still, that's still, that's not this either. This is strictly just the lines on the map where we're drawing the TIF district. Yeah. Any public comment concerning resolution 2024-38? And a motion?
Make a motion, we approve resolution 2024-38.
Motion approved, there are second?
All second.
Second from John, unfair side.
Aye.
Those opposed? That was approved, Keith, I'm sorry. Approved, okay. And those opposed? That is approved. Thank you, council. Thank you, Jessica. All right, next will be ordinance 2024-36, council to consider the Hickory Junction 2 PUD rezone for 22, sorry, 255, John Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. We'll look at a little different project we've got going on in another part of the city. Go ahead and get connected here. So what is before you tonight is a P, Plan Unit Development or PUD rezone. I'll first talk a little bit about what PUD rezone is, and then we'll go into the site specifically. So first, the Plan Unit Development Process is one that is often used when you have a proposed development that doesn't fit neatly in one of the existing zoning districts. For example, this site has a mix of uses that includes both commercial and residential uses, and we don't have one zoning district that would allow that variety of uses under one umbrella. So what the Plan Unit Development Process does is allows you to essentially set up sub-districts in your overall development, and the uses that are permitted within those sub-districts, and then also write standards appropriate to the types of uses you're proposing. So with the Plan Unit Development Process then, it's a multiple step process, starting with the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission reviews the proposed development, proposed uses, and offers a recommendation on that rezone. Rezoning is a legislative process, so the Plan Commission looks at it first and provides a recommendation that to, that then forwards that Plan Unit Development Rezone and Ordinance to the council, and then the council is the body that considers the adoption of that ordinance and rezone. And so the Plan Commission did review this last week at their regularly scheduled meeting, and did forward it unanimously with a positive recommendation for the Plan Unit Development Rezone and Ordinance. So that is the process where it's, step one with the council of the introduction of the Plan Unit Development Ordinance, and then it will be under consideration for on second reading at your next meeting. So now to go into the site specifically, as the mayor said, this is Hickory Junction Two, and this really is intended to be an extension of the Hickory Junction Fieldhouse Site that you see just west of the site here. Our photography is a little bit dated, but you can see where the building pad for the fieldhouse is just starting in this. And then you will also see where Hickory Meadows, the Bel Canto apartment development is just south of that, as you can kind of see where some of the site layout is starting there as well. So this is an extension of Hickory Junction, is 60 acres approximately just to the east, and it will extend complementary uses to Hickory Junction to the east here. In reviewing it with them, we determined that it was appropriate to introduce a mix of commercial office uses adjacent to the interstate, where they're not as concerned about noise from the interstate as residential uses would be, and then transitioning to some additional residential uses as you go further south. And then we looked at that PUD process to allow them essentially to, to draw the sub-districts that will allow those commercial office uses and those other residential uses, and then write standards appropriate for each. So this is the site as you see here. Just so you know, you can also, you can start to see where Enterprise Drive is extended through the site here, and it is stubbed to this property line. So Enterprise Drive would additionally extend east through this site. It'll actually kind of curve to the southeast a little bit and get to the southeast corner of this property, within anticipation of it continuing over and providing connectivity to the next interchange south. So we will go into the pretty picture now. So this is an overall concept that is provided with the PUD ordinance for how they anticipate this site to develop. So the final development may be slightly different than this, but this does contemplate what the concept is here for overall site. So what you can see here is they would have two access points, one on the north that is connecting to a public road that is being developed as part of the Hickory Junction Site. And then also, again, you can see here the Enterprise Boulevard Extension on the south, and then they would have one access point off of Enterprise Boulevard that you see here. And the three sub-districts are as follows. As I mentioned, on the north end here is the commercial office component that is adjacent to Interstate 65. There is some additional parking that will be developed in this area for the fieldhouse for some of the larger events that they're having, so this is essentially overflow of parking for the fieldhouse itself. What you see here, and the footprints are this dark red color, would be multifamily, and they're anticipating, I believe it is, just short of 300 additional residential units that you see here on this side, and again, adjacent to the fieldhouse, so providing a transition from the higher intensity commercial uses, including the fieldhouse, to a higher density residential that you would see here where it would represent the apartments, and then transitioning to what they're right now calling a future single-family development. This would be single-family, but it would be higher density, and actually looking at alley-load product, so you would have an alley-load single-family. There are anticipating that there could be some townhomes that you would see here around the perimeter in this, I would say, in orange color, and then transitioning to more of the detached single-family product that you'd see here. And again, they're, they're anticipating an additional 160 plus or minus single-family units in this component here. Again, that's subject to a slight modification as they start actually designing this. This is really just in concept plays, phase, but once they start designing this out and coming back with their, with their primary plat and, and further plans, and then they'll get those nailed down as to exactly how many lots are appropriate, given where they need to do infrastructure and things like that, and drainage gets finalized. So this is all concept plan phase here. But that's a quick overview of the PUD that's proposed here. Again, this is the first reading of the ordinance, and then it would come back to you for the second reading of potential adoption at your next meeting, at which time they'll, they'll get further into the design of the overall site and come back through the Plan Commission process to get preliminary plans and primary plats approved at that time. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Ben?
And I got, Ben, I got one question. Just because we'll have it coming up here, I think, next. Wanted to make sure that developers are responsible for the streetlights to go in later? Because I think I asked you once about Enterprise Boulevard, about streetlights going down to Enterprise Boulevard now?
Yeah, yeah, maybe Kevin can address this a little bit too, but yeah, we'll definitely make sure as part of their preliminary plans and construction plans that they've accommodated street lighting in those as well.
Yeah, okay. I don't want them coming back when we have to put lights up.
For sure.
On the, on the diagram, you said in the red, are those all apartments?
Yes, to the west here, directly adjacent to the fieldhouse, would be multi-story, multifamily apartments. Class, they would be Class A market rate apartments.
Thank you.
How many acres does this entail?
This is plus or minus about 60 acres. So I think, I think the density maximum in the multifamily area is 22 units, although I think it's less than that. And then the residential area, I don't remember exactly, it's, it's less than 10 units per acre. I can't remember the total, though.
Can you go back to one of your earlier photos that you had?
Pull the screen up again.
Probably the aerial, Ben. One earlier, yeah, the aerial.
It's the aerial photography? Yeah.
I know that they talked about they were going to put hotels and something in the future in this area. Where is that going to be located? That, it looks like it's-
So as part of the initial fieldhouse development, they've proposed hotels that would essentially be the northern-
That area, okay.
-third of the commercial site. I think they're talking about 400 plus rooms by the time it's fully developed.
They said restaurants and hotels, and I didn't see which area that they were looking at.
Yeah, that would be in the, I guess, the phase one of the Hickory Junction project at the north end here by the interchange, and then along State Road 39.
Thank you.
So the, yeah, the hotels, restaurants, retail are kind of in the, the phase one Hickory Junction. This is the, this is in the yellow box.
I didn't know if the PUD was cutting off some of that property, but it, it does-
No, this, this is all, this is all new property, and that would be phase two.
Yep. Any further questions? Okay, Rob, can you read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2024-36, again, is Hickory Junction 2 PUD District, amending ordinance 2024-02, the Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Lebanon. Whereas the City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission Consider Petition Docket 24-30, filed with the commission, requesting the PUD rezone to be known as Hickory Junction Two with regard to the real estate described in Exhibit A. The commission then forwarded its docket 24-30 after a public hearing to this council with a favorable recommendation of a vote of 7-0 in accordance with Indiana law. This council is subject to the provisions of Indiana law, and therefore finds as follows. Again, this is a lengthy ordinance, and I'll just hit the highlights you've been given it. So section one talks about the applicability of the ordinance. Section two is the definition, talks about strategic capital partners, or it's designated as the developer. Section three describes the concept plan, and that's also in Exhibit B. And then section four has underlying zoning districts set forth out. Section five talks about the permitted conditional and prohibited uses that are all laid out on several pages. Get over here, then we have the general regulations are set out. Again, they'll have the setbacks, size of lots, and their, section eight talks about the development standards. Again, that's, it's on several pages. Section nine talks about the design standards. That's also the character imagery is set forth in Exhibit C. And then section 10 addresses the pedestrian network standards, and then some other technical requirements with any vacation of right of way.
Thank you, Rob. That ordinance been read on first reading. We'll take that up at our next meeting, which will be December 9th at 7:15 PM. Any public comment concerning ordinance 2024-36? Okay, I'll move on next to a funding request concerning initial street lighting in this simplicity neighborhood. Kevin?
Thank you very much. See if this connection will work here. All right, so this is the simplicity subdivision. This is located just east of Grant Street. Grant Street is on the, the left side of the map there. Tiger Way goes to the west, Essex Drive goes to the east. This is the simplicity subdivision. I'm bringing this before you at the request of, of Councilman Kincaid, at the request of a constituent, looking at this neighborhood that was originally built without any street lighting, and requesting that you consider adding street lighting. This request was also before the Board of Public Works at the meeting prior to this, where they did approve that subject to your funding. So essentially, some backstory here, the, the neighborhood was built originally as a private development with private streets, and sometime under a previous administration, it was accepted into the city's network of public infrastructure, and those became public streets. If this were built today, would, would be required to be built with, with street lighting. And so what we are suggesting, if you do want to move forward with funding this project, that at least five lights would be added at the configuration shown on here, which would be in keeping with how we typically light residential neighborhoods. One at every intersection, one at the ends of cul-de-sacs, one, you know, bisecting long street segments. I think the difficulty here is, is that unlike, say, the request that was before you at your last meeting for Anderson Lane, where we have overhead utilities, this is an underground utility subdivision, so it does require boring trenching and the construction of poles. There aren't existing light poles or existing utility poles that these lights can be mounted on. And the standard that Lebanon Utilities applies when they're installing underground lights is to install decorative lighting. So this is a, quite a bit more expensive than the basically free of charge overhead lighting that can be added. There is a significant cost. Lebanon Utilities anticipated five lights at a cost of $19,840. That's just for the light fixtures and poles, and then based off of similar projects that we've done in the past, I think you've got to figure on another $20,000 for other electric lines, conduits, materials, and then another $10,000 for installation. So the total cost would, would be approximately, if you were asking me today, approximately $50,000, but none of this work has been bid out at this time. But again, for your consideration, if you would so choose to fund this project, this was the simplicity subdivision lighting layout. Out of Mike, if you wanted to share anything else from your conversations with some of your, your constituents?
The president of the HOA came to our attention, and, and so I drove that area one evening, and I live next door to it, but I never go back there at night. And I went back there, and it's absolutely pitch black. I mean, there is no light once you get past the nursing home. And so just staying consistent with the safety features that we have in other subdivisions, I think, you know, they deserve to have that street lighting.
And they use just regular streetlights instead of this?
No, no, because there's no overhead utilities, there's no utility poles to mount them to.
Yes, normally, if we have, like with the Cobra Heads, if there's an existing overhead poles, things like that, that's what we mount them to, right? So like, that's why it's a pretty cheap fix for those, and they just charge us to $8 a month or whatever it is to do those. But because it's an underground utility, there's no, there, we have to go back in and install the conduit, do all this stuff, so.
And essentially, Lebanon Utilities doesn't have the equipment to install all this, so they would be, they would be bidding out trenching and boring to install these lights, as well as then, you know, the cost of the light poles and fixtures, which they have already estimated based off of their buying agreements that they have in place.
What's the total cost?
Just shy of $50,000 in my, in my estimation.
Per light?
No, no, total.
About $10,000 per light.
For the whole, whole thing. It's about $5,000 a light for just the light and the pole, and then there's, there's all the installation, the cabling, things like that that have to go.
It's gonna be a lot more than that. I'm glad it's not.
How about the HOA? I see a face of something too.
I don't think that's appropriate. I really don't. I mean, it's not their fault, it's not, it's not their fault that the builder didn't put streetlights in.
Well, it's not their fault that the city didn't require the builder to put the streetlights in either.
Correct, yeah, so I mean, it was the city's responsibility.
The HOA should have something to it.
This is why nowadays, even if a developer wants to build a private street subdivision, we require them to build to public standards, so that if in the future, a future administration would be convinced to take over the maintenance of the streets and the street lighting, that that would be built to our standards. But this was not always the case in Lebanon.
The addition, the addition north of them, Stable Walk, do they have, they have lighting through Stable Walk?
I, I believe they do.
Yeah.
So my, my only thought with this, and I, I do see value, and I, I've, you know, I've been back in the neighborhood at night, and it is a very dark neighborhood, I agree with you. You know, we've talked about, we have a, a bond issuance for the, our kind of end of the year bond we're doing, and we talked about in our work sessions of using that for kind of funding some of the streetlight projects. My only discussion, I think, for council is, do we kind of bundle a couple of these projects together and then bid them all out kind of as one? You know, we've talked about doing more lighting in the Hoosier State's neighborhood, maybe in the Prairie Heights neighborhood, those are kind of some areas we know that are kind of some darker areas in town that we want to address with that. So I guess that's something for us to discuss, because, because we can't necessarily take a motion today, where we, we didn't, we didn't advertise additional appropriation, so it's really more just a discussion. I guess what I would bring to council is, are you guys comfortable with us kind of working with Kevin and, you know, maybe Ben, the, you know, electric utilities to kind of bundle all these together and come up with kind of a, here's like five different lighting projects around the city, and then kind of present that to you guys? Does that, does that kind of make sense? And then-
I make that's one of those projects.
Make this one of those projects, if that's-
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea.
Will the lights be the same at every location, or are they going to be different? Are they going to be the same size as what was on Grant Street? Are they going to be, illuminate the same, or, I mean, there's a difference?
I think the illumination pattern would be relatively the same. The Lebanon Utilities standard underground light fixture is a little different than the city standard that we've adopted, which is, is another question of, I think, is we're- the city standard that we've adopted, which is, is another question of, I think, as we're getting into this project of, of developing lighting programs associated with this bond issuance, what do we want to do? Do we want to go with the standards that we've used, say, on the East Street Trails, on the Big Four Trail, on the downtown and Memorial Park?
Avenue, which is different style.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, are we looking at having different lights throughout the city of Lebanon, or are we going to try to be standard and have them close to the same?
We've talked about where major arterials, so like in Alvis Avenue, Grant, or, well, Grant Street has the, actually has the decorative ones like on East Street. But like Whit Road, that would actually be more than acorn style because that'll be kind of a major connector around on the west side. Lafayette Avenue probably would go to more of that acorn style hanging light. But then the neighborhood streets are kind of more of the, what we see on East Street is kind of what I kind of have in my mind, but I don't think we necessarily put that in, in writing, have we, Kevin, from that standpoint?
We have not.
But, you know, they have, and a lot of the downtown ones are Sternberger lights, but they also have, a lot of these companies have very similar patterns with them. So just kind of a matter of, obviously, the decorative ones are more expensive, but it's all, you know, the black, but...
I was gonna say, most of them are black.
You just have to look at them really hard to notice a difference on the design. But yeah, if we go with like kind of black metal, I mean, they'll all rhyme, more or less, yeah.
Still looking at downtown also in this...
Yeah, expanding it, yeah. And that's something we talked about too, doing the kind of the next ring around.
Take it further out all the way.
Yep, that'd be some additional ideas with that, so.
Yeah, bumbling is good.
You guys like that idea? Okay, so let's, because we'll kind of, we're finalizing that, so we'll come back. I'll touch these with Kevin. We'll kind of come up with some lists and kind of give you guys some, some eyes on that for you, so.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. And then we have a final invoice approval for Grant Street Phase One.
Yes, this is, this is a tough one. So we have been, obviously, Grant Street Phase One wrapped up late last year, and we've been sort of closing out the project with NDOT, with punch list repairs and things of that nature. There are 14 change orders that were part of the project, some very, very small, some, some larger, just various items. And as we've been going through the process, we were working with our consultants, VS Engineering, as well as the NDOT area engineer, and we are in the NDOT Crawfordsville sub-district. So the area engineer that works for the sub-district works hand in hand with myself and our consultants as we go through the project to manage the contracts, manage the contractor, process change orders, process payments. You're probably, most of you are probably aware of this, but when you get NDOT funding for a project, we are not the contract holders. The state is the contract holder. The state pays all the bills. When they let the project or bid the project, they use the term letting. After letting, they notify you of what your financial share is, and usually it's about 20% of the project. And we paid that fee to them two years ago. And then we've been working through this process, and all of these change orders that we process, we had been given direction by our consultants and the NDOT area engineer that these are what they call participating. And participating usually means that they are going to continue their 80/20 share on the project. What I've come to find out, though, is that although things are participating, that doesn't necessarily mean they will fund the project even though they are participating. Participating in NDOT central office language just means that it would qualify for funding, but it doesn't necessarily guarantee funding. So although my consultants and our area engineer have been advising me that we have these 13 change orders, I'm sorry, I think I said 14 earlier, 13 change orders, that would total our participation cost of roughly $108,000, and they submitted all of those to NDOT central office to close out the project. NDOT central office denied funding of all of those change orders and promptly sent us a bill, which is due upon receipt, for $393,276.65. And we have no choice but to, to pay that bill. That's in our contractual arrangement with the state. But we do not have the funding. We were, in the funding sources that were set aside for Grant Street, we have, I believe, about $35,000 left that we knew was going to come on, online for some, some additional work that we've had to do, and then some of the other change orders, because they were falling into drainage issues, were falling into stormwater capital funds. So we had that $108,000, but we did not have $393,000 set aside. And I know you don't, at this time, have an appropriated line that would cover this. So we really can't take any action tonight other than to present this to you. And if it, if it would, my recommendation would be that we, we authorize the clerk treasurer's office to issue the proper notices for an additional funding appropriation at your December 9th meeting for you to consider that actual funding, if that would be the way forward. But to be honest, I don't see another way forward. We are contractually obligated to pay this bill. What questions can I answer on that? I know that's a lot.
Do you have 108 sitting over here somewhere?
Exactly.
So you got a balance of about 295?
Yeah.
Wait, the balance is 295 or the balance is?
Well, 393, so minus 108, it's about...
393, yeah, minus 108, what we were assuming, there's about 35 left in...
So it's not an additional 400?
It's not an additional. No, we need to get to a total. And what I would say is, I'll work with Kelsey to get the exact numbers. I'll finalize what we have set aside in store and what we have set aside, I believe in its CCD funds, and then, and get you a final appropriation request that we would bring before you.
When you say set aside, are they set aside directly for this project?
There's one line that isn't a direct appropriation that's set aside. The stormwater funds, they're, they're just unrestricted capital funds in stormwater that could be used.
I'd hate to take them out of stormwater as opposed to just go ahead and ask for it in the general...
And that is your, your decision as the fiduciary body?
Let's do that and take it out of there, because we got other stormwater projects that we're gonna need, and I don't want to be taking money out of stormwater to, to cover this. Let's just bite the bullet and...
We have good balances in our general fund.
Ask for additional appropriation from our general fund to pay this invoice.
Absolutely. And there are, there are ample general fund, there are ample balances in our general fund that are far exceed coverage, recommended coverage on our budget for next year that we could use.
I'm just curious, what was the overrun item that they listed for $168,000?
It was additional common excavation, unsuitable soils that we didn't know were, were going to be there.
They had to dig out more and then replace it?
They had to dig out and haul away, could not reuse some of the underlying subsoil that our geotech reports and our engineers have said we should be able to reuse. A lot of that had to be hauled away and just disposed of offsite.
Usually, usually, these things are taken care of.
Usually, yeah, I mean, there's...
NDOT's been in a position where now these costs of projects have been higher. Every project across the state of Indiana that NDOT is paying for is costing a lot more money, and they're using up money that they did not plan to use up.
There are lots of overruns and underruns in the contract. There are lots of negatives in addition to positives, but this is the net, this 393. But yes, usually you get to the end and your underruns cover your overruns, and there's, if there's any, there's a small amount. You know, we've had similar things on Indianapolis Avenue, Phase One, Phase Two. I think the Phase Two, we owed $30,000 at the end of it, which we were tracking the whole time. Again, we were tracking 108,000. It wasn't until we got this final invoice that they said, it's not 108, it's 393.
Did you say they backed out of 10 items or something like that, and you weren't expecting to get this?
Well, I was, I was expecting their participation level to be paying 80% of this bill, not paying, not paying 0%. And that was what we were told by our NDOT representatives on a, on a regular basis. But that was the Crawfordsville District, the central office, the office in Indianapolis is the one that determines the final pay amounts.
No appeal process?
I've appealed. No formal appeal process.
I, I had some, I had some, call it back channel discussions about it as well, too. And yeah, there's, it's no appeal on it, so.
So that's what I have for your consideration. If you would, I guess, be so inclined...
Counsel generally comfortable with using kind of combination CCD funds, general fund balances going forward, just we'll, so we'll work through all the exact amount. And it has to be advertised by tomorrow, probably? Can they notice?
It's 10 days prior to the meeting?
Yeah, but it's like more than that to get it to the paper and by Sunday afternoon.
Right, right.
I don't think, I don't think we need to rush.
Well, I've told, I have made it clear that we will fulfill our obligations after we exhausted those conversations. But they have to understand, we, just like federal highway, do not have this kind of money just sitting there, which is kind of a... Well, I don't, I don't, I don't appreciate that statement, but yes, we, they say they don't have the money to pay for it. Well, we sure as heck don't have the money to pay for it, so we have to go through this process to pay the bill.
Again, we'll get something together and we'll notify you guys, and we'll take that up at our December 9th meeting, so. Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes what I have for new business. Anything from counsel?
Sure. Motion to pay the claims.
We have motion to pay the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for John, on fair side.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any answers to our discussion? Would entertain a motion to adjourn?
We're sure by a happy Thanksgiving. Next motion, adjourn.
We have motions, there a second?
Second.
Second for Mike, on fair side.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, our next meeting will be December 9th at 7:15 PM. We are adjourned.